Please go on.
Yeah, state of the art technologies. You did not. Ooh. So exciting. Oh, look at that. That's so cool. Something just popped up about the meaning. Themes.
Like notification?
Mm hmm.
Cause the calendar part?
It's under activity.
Um. Uh unless it's just showing for me. I turn mine off. But I think there's always so many, like anytime I got a calendar thing that pops up. That's a bad.
Yeah, I knew a lot.
I didn't either. And just as often.
Sit right here, right side of you.
Thank you for ever.
You're always on the go. Update you.
Email that.
I know. In case you're not in a seat. I did. I was trying to get on your calendar, but I said, actually.
Did I?
Yeah. Yeah, let's watch you. Yeah.
I get to the back. Do that. Give her a copy.
Are you?
Thank you. Good.
Oh, they show us cross.
Hey, we have a second.
Got it too. Thank you.
And you used to buy the last two.
It's a lot of thirty, but it's in my hair yet. Maybe it'll end or we ain't. Yeah, it's much time. Actually, we have three presentations.
Much smoother than last one.
Uh, no, my gosh. Fifty talking required. Eric's in the other room with Paslow and Daniel. Hmm, yay.
If every day are wrong.
Pretty calm.
I've had some in the comfort today. Well, fine, this is so.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, it's very good.
I totally agree. Thank you. It's funny.
Then the.
But I was like, maybe.
It's probably just like they don't want.
But I wouldn't need.
Well, how could you? Put them there. Words. We love people there.
Yes, the name. Thank you. Yeah, you've got for yourself. Eric, we need a lawyer to start. This is the next one. Be you welcome. Welcome. Yeah, we were having marvelous. Here, I'll go get it. I saw she been showing video. It is definitely something. Look at that. These things. Yeah, definitely. That's my. Exactly.
That's what that was my first activity where I visited. Six years ago, six years ago. With the little bicycle, like the cart. Yeah.
And.
No, 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 like the one she's talking about.
It's called the woo-ha.
Yes. The woo-ha, yes. And did you? Let me see. I wanna do anything illegal now's the time. All right. It is going.
Should I go ahead and start? All right, are we recording? Okay. Good morning, calling to order the stewardship subcommittee meeting. It's eleven thirty six AM. For the record, my name is Mickey Durding, Strategic Initiatives Manager in the City Manager's Office. I'll be facilitating today's meeting. As it dies with me is city manager Eric King from the city's attorney's office is Michael Selkirk. And then all the stewardship subcommittee members are present. Mayor Pro Tem Megan Perkins, Councilor Barbara Campbell, Councilor Mike Riley. And we have one item on the agenda, the Bureau Housing Affordability and Employment Growth Policy. Sorry, I was running. It will be presented by Urban Renewal Project Manager Jonathan Taylor. With him today is Real Estate Director Matt Stewart. Um, but first, if we could please get your approval on the meeting minutes from May thirty first. Move to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Jonathan, the floor is yours.
So the word of today, simplicity. All right, so.
Careful, I'm a P-Weave's playhouse. I'm liable to yell every time I hear it.
So before you, you have a packet, which is your issue summary. But then in addition, we have the policy justification, which is a data dump, pretty much of everything that is going on in Bend, both demographic and multi-unit family market. That is how we are basing our proposed policy today using that data. So it's a good starting point for this conversation, as well as any additional questions you might have. So what are we trying to do today and what are we trying to accomplish? So effectively, we want to lower rents and encourage good paying jobs where we're able to. And how are we going to do that? We want to use tax increment financing to incentivize livability. And I think we can all agree that for us, livability is having a good paying job that provides a way to affordably rent or own a home. And then reasonably access access things you might want to enjoy in life. But that's the thing, Bend provides a lot of things to enjoy. So by twenty thirty, an additional fifteen thousand people will move to our community. Forty percent of those are estimated to be renters. With this projected growth and current future supply of housing, we know that housing prices will continue to increase. In addition, the housing that is currently being built is becoming more out of reach for a growing share of our households. So the problem is very simple. Currently, eight out of ten jobs median wages and nearly fifty percent of our households cannot adequately afford rent of a multifamily unit in Bend. In your policy document on pages four and six, we'll kind of delineate a little bit more of what that kind of problem is. Here is an example of fifty occupations within fifty four percent of our total employment base. Anything from a food server or waiter all the way up to an entry level teacher. The graph before you indicates what should someone spend, which is thirty percent of their income on housing and where should that land? As you can see with the um graph of eighteen hundred dollars, that is the average rent of multifamily unit in Bend. For a single wage earner who might be a teacher, in order to be not cost burden, which is thirty percent more of your income on housing. They would effectively need to spend twelve hundred dollars or less in rent. And like I said, eighteen hundred dollars is the average rent across that. So that incorporates both single family rent and multifamily rent. But not all is doom and gloom. Bend is actually doing great things that are stabilizing rent. And this is a very important graph. I want everyone to kind of hone in on. Over since twenty twenty two, we have built an additional thousand units um in multifamily rent. As a result, as Rachel has said repeatedly, more units is better, right? This is a clear indication that rent is beginning to stabilize to a certain extent. So more units do equal stabilized rent. However, with population growth, those are variables we can all, we can not always account for, but we are doing the right thing since twenty twenty two. In addition, we'll need a thousand more units of multifamily um unit types by twenty thirty. And that's in addition to what is currently being built and what is currently being planned to be built. With a strong emphasis on households making seventy two thousand dollars or less. So how is Bura going to be an adequate partner in the city council's goals of achieving affordability? Today, we are proposing two types of tax incentives. One is housing focused and the other one is employment and wage focus. We want to incentivize multifamily developments that are currently in queue or planned to provide more affordable rent units at a lower rate. On the other side, we want to incentivize employers making substantial investments to provide more good paying jobs to afford local housing costs. So what we are trying to do is effectively attack the community issue on two fronts. One, we want to encourage living wage jobs that can reduce naturally the housing cost burden. But in addition, we want to incentivize affordable and stable housing for Ben's workforce, who may not be making the adequate amount to afford or adequately attain housing in Bend. And I know I'm speeding because I'm trying to be simple, but the proposal is as this. We want to say of new development, fifteen percent of units of new constructed multifamily units are rented at ninety percent AMI or below. We want to require them that they have the lower than the maximum allowed statutory rent increases for those dedicated units. It is a ten year minimum eligibility program, which eligible for extensions. And then Bura strongly encourages healthy unit mixes and additional AMI levels. And then I think the question we want to ask is, this is the staff proposal as a baseline. Um, based on the policy documents and the data justification, what are your thoughts on these four proposed key criteria?
I'd be curious, uh, how did you land on ninety percent? Why didn't you get one twenty?
You'll turn to, I didn't put page numbers, I apologize, but if you'll turn to where it's affordability impact, I think it's page six. Seven.
This the one that's the justification document?
Yes, sir.
That's a disparity thing.
Yeah, so this is the the document that you're looking at as well. So what we have found that market rate data, and this is just recent current development rate rents. The individuals that make between thirty percent AMI and households that are making ninety percent AMI, those that um variable are either slightly cost burdened or extremely cost burdened. The market is currently meeting the need for those making a hundred percent AMI or more. So our, our starting point is just ninety percent. So we are, we are doing it as like if we're trying to stabilize rent prices, which as you seen with the last graph, we've been effective in this community by doing so. So that's just where we started. In addition, based on American Community Survey data, the yellow boxes indicate the household size, area, household income. So for a household one, it's forty three thousand. So you'll see it's right in the middle of the cost burden. And then households two through four are a little bit outside the cost burn ship, but you can see the, the graph is expanding, so to speak.
And this is rent. This is not.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, okay. Yet today's presentation is entirely focused on multifamily rent.
Okay.
But so I mean, I guess I'm curious about, it seems that what helping, you know, folks kind of right on the margin of the affordability question there when we're looking at it at ninety percent. And I'm just wondering why we didn't choose a per, or why not choose a percentage that's lower? This more we go these eighty. If we're trying to focus on the folks that are more cost burn.
So the initial policy was up to ninety percent. So we have the flexibility to encourage lower AMIs, but if the council subcommittee strongly desires a lower AMI. I'm, this was just a beginning, starting point.
No, I understand that. And I mean, how would we encourage that? How would we get something that's different than just, just below that ninety percent threshold? What are the real things we would do to get that out?
You're the real estate guy.
All right, Matt Stewart, Minneapolis Department. I think, you know, the flexibility is building into that, and I think with the policy John was together. Over the next six months, we can kind of build inside development and Bura then can make the decision whether they want to emphasize a lower level or up to that ninety percent. Because Bura will have the entire discretion upon itself to approve a project or not. It's not necessarily, do you meet this criteria and you get this benefit? It's you meet this criteria, but we still have final say. So I think you have that ability at more of the borough level to decide whether we want to sort of go after more development or kind of break it back. I think we're looking at kind of the macroeconomics of everything. We're seeing a slowdown in new development. And I think from our perspective is we want to try to incentivize and more development to keep going. So we don't run out of apartments in the next twelve to twenty four months and then have nothing for three to five years on the horizon. So for us, it's like if we play this kind of balance at the ninety percent, maybe we can still incentivize just enough to get someone in the door. So we can kind of keep that supply going and going back to John's previous graph of sort of keeping that stabilization. Obviously, with interest rates where they are, that's, that's kind of that macroeconomic factor we're seeing in construction. So again, if we pass, if we decide to move forward this today and Bura decides to opt out this, there's nothing that says we come back in January, February and go, hey, let's tweak it a little bit one way or another, based on the market conditions we're seeing, but this at least gives us a starting point.
Well, maybe Jonathan, just to go back to the slide that shows the historical trends of vacancy and units being built. Um, just to emphasize.
Pattern, yeah.
That pattern, right? So I think our vacancy rate is hovering in the ten, eleven percent, healthy vacancy rate is about eight percent. So yes, we are a little above that, but not grossly, right? And I think that this graph illustrates that it doesn't take long for this community to absorb right, uh, units when they come online. So I think I really want to challenge us as an organization, as a city, to be thinking longer term versus just what's in the moment right now. Um, because I think you can get really, we're complacent and say, oh, we have this vacancy rate problem. We're in a good spot. Well, because of our growth, as Jonathan was saying, it is a pretty short term. You know, issue of, of maybe having a little bit of a higher vacancy rate. We need to make sure there's a pipeline uh that's commensurate with the level of growth that we're seeing. I think just to emphasize that.
Yeah, so Eric pointed that, that's one thing that Eric required for us to put into the um justification. So on the last page, you'll see the absorption of units constructed, which means rented. So for example, since two thousand, Ben has built over five thousand multifamily units and we have averaged a historic vacancy rate of five percent. As Eric was saying, right now we have ten percent, but on average, it has taken less than six months to newly constructed units to be absorbed. So what we're expecting is the nine hundred and twenty seven units that have been built since twenty twenty three. It is projected that Ben will absorb these new units by quarter four of twenty twenty five, so in less than a year.
And you can kind of see that historical trend on that graph, especially in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one, we did see an influx. And then within less than a year, we were already crossing that barrier. So while the jump we have right now is a little bit bigger, we're seeing with our population increase, a greater absorption of those kind of units.
I mean, it seemed like what you were just talking about, Matt, was a focus um on supply, like keeping up the steady supply. But at the same time, isn't the point of this um policy to make sure that we're providing units for people that experience the cost burdens more significantly, which seems to me is folks that are lower than the ninety percent AMI level. So I'm um, and I, you know, I see the flexibility. I'm just, I mean, Bura, we're gonna look at every single project and weigh them against past ones and. Might ask Ray, Ray. It's complex to me to.
Because one of the things that Rachel has said, which I think is um is on my mind right now, is, is the focus on um attainability more than affordability and, and being able to maintain. Yeah, so.
You can't enter a unit if it doesn't exist. And so for our housing spectrum, we're kind of getting clogged in that actual lower affordable housing development. They need those middle income and market rate units to move into because those have been, their vacancy rate is like nil. They haven't moved. They haven't adjusted because those middle income market rate units don't exist for them to move into. And so while there is greater need for those numbers, there's also greater need for those middle income numbers to actually have the opportunity to move along that housing spectrum. In addition, we subsidize eighty percent and below. There is no subsidy for eighty percent and above. And so if nothing exists for that, it's less likely to be developed. So that's another benefit of going up to ninety percent.
I mean, we're talking about fifteen percent of the units in total, though we're not talking about the entire projects, right? So we're talking about a small portion um of, of units.
But it would also allow those middle income households to have like that rent kind of stabilized for a brief period of time, if that's part of the policy. And so those middle income households would be, be allowed to kind of be in those positions for a number more years before they could save and hopefully move up to market rate opportunities.
I'm okay with ninety percent. I would, I, I was just gonna ask you about just consistency, because yes, eighty percent is the number I've heard over and over. And so there's no problem. You actually think this is better to include a few more.
I think flexibility, flexibility allows developers more opportunity to develop because the more you reduce their cost of development, the more housing they can produce. And at this time, we can see where this gets us. And then if it's just what we need, then we can adjust from there.
Thank you.
And so what um, I mean, the, the concrete stuff we would provide, they've got to get developers focusing on lower, uh, lower AMI levels in these projects or what? I mean, my understanding from the policies is pretty clear. There's a, there's um reimbursement of the increment, right? That Bura receives for up to ten years. Is there something else that, that's just magically you guys would pull out of thin air to, to provide to individual projects? And how does that work? I mean, it seems like the policy is the policy and these are the things you get and we can't change it then for this set of circumstances necessarily. I'm not.
So let's say a developer comes in and says, we can do ten years, fifteen percent of our units at ninety percent. But then we have negotiations, which Bura is allowed to do. And they say, if you give us twelve years of annual rebate, we can get down to seventy percent. That's the flexibility that I think Eric is looking for, for us to offer you guys as policymakers. The bare minimum is this with the ten year, but if they go above and beyond, like they did in Salem, which they provided a forty one year, eighty percent of twenty five percent of units, they have that flexibility. This is just like the starting point, as Rachel was saying.
So it's like the minimum.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're, this is the floor and the signal that we're trying to establish. But as, as Jonathan has said now, you know, a few times, it's really to get people in the door, right? Then we can sort of negotiate, hey, what about a longer time for more affordability? Um, there might be circumstances that are unique to a project that we just want to engage on. And I, I think that's what we have to recognize, that not all projects are coming to the table with the same, I mean, all the performers are very different. And you know, what they're, what they might be in for their land costs or infrastructure costs or whatever, it's dynamic. So this is just giving us the flexibility to have the conversation.
And what's great is that you can, a year from now, what came through the door? Do we need to adjust the policy? Do we need to go down to that eighty percent?
And that flexibility would exist on the percentage as well, both sides.
And that second bullet point means if the, the dedicated units would not have to, would not be raised, the run would not be raised as they would with the other eighty five percent. Okay.
And what are those numbers? Can you talk about the, the specifics of that a little bit more, the statutory?
It changes every year.
Yeah, it's inflation with CPI. So right now it's ten percent. So a unit can be raised ten percent. We are asking for less than the statutory requirements.
But that's.
It could be a negative, it's a negative, and they can't then raise.
Yeah.
And then in the policy, we've also, like Eric was saying, we've. Clearly identified that Bura desires healthy unit mixes, because we don't want to over leverage on just studios. Because it may not serve a household of two or three, but then also provides units that are even lower AMI. So it's in, we want the developer to understand floor, but we have a desire for varying levels of affordability.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with this as a floor. I think it. Um, it has the potential to. Be really exciting and make some. Good changes for attainability.
And the full council is, we're taking this to the subcommittee, but we're intending to have a presentation with the full council in August with policy. I hope that policy gets approved at the first meeting in September.
August twenty first.
August twenty first, yeah. Yeah, August seventh work session, August twenty first.
And we'll get to it in a minute, but we've still got a couple of community groups that we want to go out to to get final feedback, like BDAB and their working group, and then also AHAC on August fourteenth, so. Right. So why is the, why will this impact our community need? And I think this gets to your point, Council Riley. So by focusing on at least a targeted AMI with adaptability, this incentive will encourage not only more affordable rental units. But because we're exempting the entire development. It'll also encourage that other community of need of just more apartment units in general. So it's not a one to one trade off. So this is the benefit about this proposed policy is we're getting something. That is desperately needed in the community. On one side, but kind of moving that pipeline toward where we can still stay ahead of the curve based on that graph of. We can stay ahead, keep the demand a little bit higher than what it is now, and then have constant stuff in the supply line. We're effectively. Addressing both community needs, affordability and attainability. Now, the second part of the policy is if. Are we good with housing for right now? We'll tackle the employment.
Yeah, I wanted to ask two other questions. My recollection from the last meeting is that we asked. Uh, there was some discussion about, you know, looking at energy performance stuff to some extent. Clients is or that's. H back systems, and then also there were some. Questions about gentrification displacement. That was something that you brought up, and so I didn't see anything about that in. The discussion today, so I'm wondering if you can just talk to us some more about that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk about the gentrification displacement issue. So by law, whenever we establish. The TIF area, we are required not to displace anybody. So that'll automatically be in the plan document. We'll address it in the administrative policy of what that's going to be included. When we reference O R S four, five, seven, it incorporates everything that's legally required of an urban renewal plan and project. So it'll be in there, Counselor. As for. The kind of energy efficiency, if that is something that specifically needs to be called out, we'll do that in a policy. We figured when we were talking to our community groups of if the baseline is affordability and we don't want to put more development restrictions on. Which is upfront cost, they'll eventually pass that off to the non-dedicated units. So we're trying to thread that line. But if, if it is an important policy or value of this subcommittee to address some sort of like efficiency or green energy, climate friendly. Then please let, we can add that into this as well. If, if energy efficiency is like the base minimum, we can definitely call that out. We were just trying to attack the one main root problem, which was affordability and the cost of development.
I think the reason it was brought up was in the context of just energy costs being an important part of what makes a home affordable while you're living in it beyond just the rent costs. I mean, is there a way to put it in there in the same way that we're encouraging healthy unit mixes and additional AMI levels that we can talk about? You know, we're also encouraging developers to be thinking about this in the same way and provide some similar flexibility at a minimum.
Yep. So, uh, unlike this one, which is the housing kind of portion, if you go to page two of the. Like the proposed policy on attachment B. You'll see site review, finance review and project review. We could add that probably in the project review requirements. Does this meet? Efficiency standards, and we can call that out in the administrative policy. So if that is a, a desire, we can do that.
I'd like to see it in.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Good to add to it. I think that would go into what he was talking about, being able to negotiate. So.
You understand.
Two years to it, to have that. So that's something we'd be able to balance.
Right, that's my point, is treat it the same way we're treating other AMI levels.
Okay.
Yeah, so they may come back, we go ten, and they may come back like, well, we're going to meet that. We need an extra two years of that, and that's, that, that's something we can then negotiate in. But we just may see longer terms on that reimbursement to cover some of those costs.
Yep.
Can we be more specific and say, you know, natural gas?
My. Yeah.
Say all electric.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think. If, if the subcommittee remembers that we're, we're in a process right now of looking into different options for electrification. Uh, we have a consultant under contract and we're actively looking into that. And we're going to come back to council with different, different options. So I think. It's probably better, or at least my recommendation would be not to focus on one of those options now. But to look at different ways through this program, we could incentivize the type of options that, 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 that consultant ends up recommending to council.
Thank you.
And Rachel, sorry you cut that down, but do you feel comfortable with that this will address the sort of the gentrification displacement? Worries that we had?
Yeah, under the, um, urban renewal requirements.
Great, great, okay. Okay, great.
So Jonathan, can I ask you, um, so imagine, so let's just take away the fifteen percent of units. Um, the AMI, theoretically, this. This program. Would work. To just reduce the market rate rents in general. And if we wanted to, we could just be running that program.
I mean, that is the program. So what, it's, it's not necessarily a one to one trade off, is what we talked about in our little meeting, but it was. This developer. Allocates a certain percentage. Which here is fifteen. Those fifteen percent will go to the ninety percent or lower, and then that's where they use that rebate to offset that lost cost. That market rate rent, without getting too technical. Their investors, their loans, all that stuff it takes to build a development. They have pre-established rent rates that they have to aim for in order to cover that loan cost. And so what we're trying to do is. Like, the market isn't favorable to anything right now, so we're just using that rebate. To incentivize them to lower that rent.
And to lower all of the rents? No.
Just the fifteen, the percent.
Just the fifteen. Okay.
If there are a hundred units, fifteen units rent would have to meet whatever the.
Yeah, no, thank you.
And at least ninety percent.
Right, no, I get that. I guess what I'm trying to find out is, do we think, you know, is this trying to, do we think it will also reduce rates? For the other eighty five percent that are being built? Or no, it kind of works the opposite?
So in our analysis that we did in last May, we kind of averaged that we could get lower rents for a lot of the units. But you're definitely getting the fifteen percent at ninety percent.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I will say this, in terms of, like. To Council Riley's point last time, the financial review, when we do that internally. I will be very frank, they're not going to fleece the city and get more than what they should based on what they're getting in return, right? So. I don't want to see a seven to one profit return on this, this. I want us to kind of get as much equitable. Development out of it as possible. And when we go through this scenario, we'll walk you through that with our first like round of applications, so you'll understand. But to your point, we, we will see lower rents or more stabilized rents for the entire development. In addition to this.
Thank you. That is kind of what I was getting at, Jonathan.
Okay.
Is it, it, because we're spending all our time on the fifteen percent of units, but we believe this program could also affect. All of the units that are burnt and bring down all of those.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yes. Thank you. Thanks.
I'll just add, and it goes back to the original graph of the supply demand. So if we keep adding units, we keep supply going, we keep vacancy at a healthy rate. We keep that step up of that increase, we keep things leveling out. So in a way, we're doing it by trying to control the supply and demand.
Right.
Cross section, not so much directly telling them to do it, but if we can. Control the market slightly.
Yeah.
Then that sort of helps things out over the long haul and keep things from. Fluctuating, I guess, rapidly.
Thank you.
All right. So just, just to clarify, we'll keep the fifteen percent, ninety percent for the recommendation for consideration to Bura, but then add into the project review. And we'll come up with an energy efficiencies. Ali and I had met. What's her name? The, the, the climate.
Cassie.
Cassie, 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 sorry. Still learning names. So we met with Cassiel. Probably like two months ago to try to like figure out what is not an onerous burden. And so I think that we'll, we'll come up with some verbiage for that. So on the other side, we've been kind of. Titling this the enterprise zone or enhanced enterprise zone. So it's basically a way to provide. New substantial employment development, the opportunity to provide better paying jobs, right? To kind of afford the livability in Bend. So basically, right now. Economic Development is working on their target and local sector analysis, which will be presented to you, I'm assuming, in the fall. And we, you know, in the policy, there's a hyperlink, so we'll automatically link to that. They must create at least five new jobs with an average annual salary of seventy two thousand. That's directly tied to the data in which. Everything below that cannot afford market rate rent in Bend. And it's a ten year maximum. There is no eligible extension, because. Commercial and industrial development is a bigger impact in terms of increment generated, and so we don't want to freeze that for both the city and our taxing districts. And. In addition, at the very bottom, we have exemptions for identified neighborhood services, and Ali is working on that. But for example, that is like childcare facilities or some sort of retail or some, some kind of neighborhood enhancement that may not be able to. Pay seventy two thousand dollars, because you see the data, it's, that's a far, it's a big gap between. An average annual wage for those industries and what we're requiring, but if it provides, like, I think Ali's working on pharmacies and. Like childcare facilities and stuff like that. So her work will. Like incorporate into this policy, so their neighborhood services are built.
And that's going to be the neighborhood for the area in which this development occurs, or just a broad. Concept of neighborhood type services across the community.
For now, it'd be broad, right? Because. If there's multiple childcare facilities and they're in the community, that's a good win, and then we'll start tackling like location services. But for now, because this is community wide. If the market says we need a childcare services here and Ali works with them, we can give them a potential policy like this and exempt their substantial improvement. So there's a benefit to the community.
Or with the market, doesn't.
Yeah, or with the market, doesn't, yeah.
Doesn't allow that neighborhood service.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then this one's a little bit more in flux, but we wanted to bring it to you at the same time as the housing, because it's the same aspect of what we're trying to accomplish. Livability, housing affordability, employment, wage growth.
And so this would be that same increment goes to the business if they meet these requirements.
It would either go to the developer, which would then pass off the cost reduction to like their, their ownership, their sale, their rent, or it would go to the end user. And we're still working on that, because we've got a couple of examples that we're kind of toying around with internally, but it's the same, same thing.
And you could do both, right? On the, you could have. Someone could say, I want, you know, a business on the bottom and, and three apartments on top.
Absolutely.
All right.
So there's not so much negotiation on this one, right? These, these are pretty set. I'm understanding this, right?
Uh, more, this is way more set than the housing, but inter, like what Council Perkins was saying, if it was like a mixed unit development, we have a way to play with these policies on that side.
So could, could somebody combine both of them?
Housing and employment, yes. It'd be structured differently, and we'll, we'll have to walk through that, but yes.
And the, the, on the. Housing side, that gets verified every year?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Annual process, how does that work?
So we're in the process of talking to housing for annual certification, because we'd want skilled individuals who have done this before to be a part of it. So. Even though it's a. Percentage rebate, right? Because it's Bura's portion, we are removing three percent or a proposed three percent just to cover the administrative aspect of it, which is what Salem does. So. Not a big hit, by no means, to what we're trying to offer.
So that's funding for the process, right? But, but how are we going to, how do we measure this? Job thing? I mean, is it, they have the jobs still have to be in existence? Is it just at the time of application? Yeah, that part seems different to me, or perhaps a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, so the enterprise zone, it's an annual affidavit, affidavit certification, so they put. There's a form that they fill out and they verify and.
That they're still providing these jobs and making these wage criteria.
Yeah, and the state provides their quarterly social security reporting. We can verify that too. So there's, we've got, we've got built in ways of verification.
Could a grocery store be considered an important neighborhood service? It would seem that it. Would, but.
That's the intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Veterinary? We can just start thinking of all the things we'd like to be able to walk to. How about a veterinary?
The neighborhood services stuff is acting and get that work get finished. I mean, not by August twenty first, I'm assuming. For that final decision point. Kind of where does that stand? How is that going to get, when is that going to be put out there that this is, this is what we've identified as the kinds of things that.
Yeah, so we just got a consultant on board to do the target sector analysis for Bend, which will identify, you know, Ben's top five. Target sectors that we really want to focus on and grow as a community, and we'll be bringing that to council likely sometime in December. Um, for sort of a head nod, are these the right, uh, target sectors? We still need to work with. Legal on kind of what exactly that adoption format will look like for. The head nod of that so that it can qualify for this program. And then we'll, um, kind of through the administrative guidelines for the program, we'll have sort of what those neighborhood services, kind of a definition of what would be eligible for that or not eligible. Uh, for that.
So that's going to be in place by the time this rolls out.
By the first application cycle.
So any more questions on the employment for now? Yeah, this one's a little bit more fluid, so we'll, we'll be doing a lot of check ins between now and, um, probably February of next year.
And this is the, it could be anywhere in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, right, yeah, thanks.
So. In addition, there are additional parameters in your staff packet. The policy is on page two. It kind of identifies what the review process is going to be. Basically, this is everything that's required by state statute. Um, and this is pretty simple for us to do internally, so property must be located within the city. It must meet the blighted definition of O R S four, five, seven, which will have in the administrative policies what that is, but we're using. Stagnant and unproductive land that contributes to the health, safety and welfare of the community. And so that's a pretty broad definition. So anything that provides housing, neighborhood services and employment qualify.
You just say that again, stagnant and.
Stagnant.
Unproductive.
Unproductive land that contributes to the health, safety and welfare of the community. Um, and I'm, it's broad, right? And that's the, that's the benefit of using urban renewal to address housing and employment growth. And then we are going to put in our own requirement that the property is smaller than twenty acres, if it's not inside an existing TIP district. Because anything larger than that requires a master plan, and that's not what we're trying to do with this project. That's an entirely different approach. The financial review, you know, it has to increase the taxable value by five hundred thousand. We talked about that last time. And, um. The project, we, when we say the project is not able to provide the units at the identified affordable rate, what we're trying to do is the market's not naturally producing affordability. This isn't to. Incentivize development that's market ready. This is just to say, you're ready to go, you're financially viable. But if we're wanting eighty to ninety percent AMI, the market isn't going to help you meet that need, so that's where we come in. That's the difference. And then the project, uh, review is it has to still meet the definitions of O R S four, five, seven. We'll have a pre-application meeting with the city's community economic development department. And then the proposed development has the ability to obtain a certificate of occupancy within three years of plan approval. So the last part is, we don't want to continue freezing. So the last part is, we don't want to continue freezing land if nothing's going to happen. So that's kind of a a nod to financial prudence for everyone else. And if there are additional things you would like us to look for on the site, finance and project review, we'd be more than happy to take those into consideration. But these three areas is basically the the primary components of what state statute requires.
Let's give out those sort of project by project versus programmatic approach. So if I understood um. Last time for new TIF areas, we have to have Bura slash the council approve, but inside existing TIF areas. We, as I understand it, we're still going to have council approve every one of these projects or Bura or.
Bura.
Or every one of these projects, correct?
Yes.
So I mean, is there, is there, has there been any discussion about um letting it roll and not having it have to come back to council every single time?
For the ones inside?
The ones in existing TIF areas, yeah.
Because it's over the threshold of what staff's allowed to give out in terms of financial review, we are required by law for you to approve that. Because it's a large amount so that, but it's a it's a work session. For Bura to understand the project, which is what was requested last time. And then two, it's just the adoption of a file in the city manager to enter into a development agreement. So it's just the thresh- financial threshold.
And those are, those thresholds are set. Uh, in our procurement, like in terms of what my authority is, right?
Kind of simplify. Uh, yeah. Keyword of the day. Then there is the consideration process and that we've outlined that on page three of your policy. There are two processes as Counsel Riley was talking about. One is inside the TIF area and one outside the TIF area. Inside TIF is much easier. It's. Basically three meetings and it's a development agreement if obviously everything meets the criteria of the policy. And then the outside is it goes through the same process as establishing a TIF plan and we've outlined that for you. And we anticipate that from Burra's recommendation of that, it's a minimum process of three months. So we can be fairly quick in terms of establishment. And don't worry about the timeline or the consideration process, because when we come before you, if there are applications next year, we'll have a very clear cut. Like, when's the decision making process and what's required of council to make those decisions? But the benefit of both of these is it's the only decision making body is council. And then after that, the plan document and development agreements approved and we're off to the races. Um. And, you know, we've had stakeholder input thus far. Uh, we've met twice or, yeah, we've met twice with uh B DAB and their working group. There'll be another meeting on August fifth. The Affordable Housing Advisory Board was on June twelfth. We had a developers round table last Friday. And then and we've had several individual consultations and so far everyone's keep it simple and be adaptable. That's kind of like the key takeaway that we've heard. And then the developers round table, they're seeing the same exact policy that was that is being presented today last Friday, and they said this was a great start. Um, so not only do we have um. The advocacy being met, we're also hearing kind of support from our developers. So we're trying to thread those needles. And then, like I said, we'll go back to uh B DAB on the fifth and the fourteenth with official request of will you recommend this? So Bura can have that official recommendation on August twenty first. And I just through the Barb actually came up with this graphic, um. How will this work? Um, so like I said, two areas, you know, inside and outside the development occurs. That new development generates tax increment. There's an annual policy certification and it just that increment gets rebated annually. It's it's pretty simple. And we're, and so far the developers are like, okay, this works. Um, so. We feel pretty confident of what we're proposing today.
I don't think I made that slide. If it had been me, it would say tiny TIF instead of.
Uh, you you came up with these five uh buckets.
Yeah.
On that day. So I was like, you tell me how this works. So. Um, but yes, so today's official staff request is we would like for this subcommittee to recommend what we've presented today with the. Modification uh energy efficiency standards in the project review. To be considered and adopted by Bura.
And we're talking yearly updates, edits?
Yes. So in the draft resolution right now, it specifically calls out an annual review.
Okay.
And the benefit, and I think this goes to one of council's goals of data informed decision making, because um. Damien, his group will be doing a housing capacity analysis in the coming years, but also we have kind of market data. So we're going to blend those two together. And when we get both, we'll have like. A true definitive data set where we can always base decisions on. Right now, we're just responding to the market. And eventually, we're going to not only respond to the market, but data. So this will be an annual thing. And like everyone was saying, we can adapt. Where we're not meeting the need.
Well, to connect some dots, remember the analysis to impediments of fair housing report identified that is a key recommendation of the need for more real time data. Which, you know, we're 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 slowly building towards with the state system, but I think we need to do more to engage some. Partners to help us get, I mean, thank thankfully, we've had Jonathan really kind of pull the what data that we have, but we. As as we develop programs like this, I think it's really important for us to make sure that we've got really timely, real time. Data to to base these decisions off.
And I think, I think, but I think the key thing that's the takeaway of this. Um, is the administrative process formation and we'll work with Eric and C M O on how to kind of keep you updated in between. August and January, so everyone knows what's coming down the pipeline. Um, but we intend to kind of start tackling that in September, October. Um, and that's just basically. How are you going to apply? What's the process? What are the definitions? What do you mean by this? And then you'll see kind of that addendum. In late, early winter. I think that's how we call it here, December. So.
And it'd be great to see the results of the um. The target sectors and the neighborhood. Benefiting jobs.
I'm happy to give my recommendation. I think this is awesome work, Jonathan and team.
Oh, yeah. By the way, couldn't done it without Rachel or Ally, so.
Good work, yeah.
Awesome work, right? This is really good.
I think so too. It's a, you know, a really interesting, um, you know, way to incentivize what we need specifically in our community. And yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of proposals we get and yeah.
And I, you know, I'm I'm hopeful that we're going to see proposals that come in or you all are able to. Work with flexibility to get us proposals that include better than ninety percent of A M I. I think that's really important. And the data that I see. In the, what you shared with us today and in the packet suggested that the need is greater, you know, there's more challenges and more problems with folks who are. A bit below that, understanding that we're, you know, too far, we're getting in the true affordable housing subsidized, fully subsidized. And that's not what this is about, right? But and and it makes a lot of sense about stabilizing supply overall and how that contributes to. Um, affordability and attainability, but it it seems important that we are serving that part of the community ideally with this policy. So I just want to emphasize that, to me anyway, that's important. I don't want to see, I ideally, we don't see all projects coming in it. You know, just immediately right below that ninety percent threshold. Then I think we need to have a more of a discussion about how we're helping the rest of the. Part of the community more.
In my world, I I hope to see like. Those fifteen percent of units, a certain percentage might be seventy five, a certain percentage might be eighty and certain percentage might be ninety. That would be my goal. Not necessarily just one all at eighty, but a healthy mix.
Yeah.
Because everyone deserves an opportunity to live in a an ideal location. And in the data report, we pointed out that location pricing does. Effect a lot of things, so.
Thank you.
So that's an official recommendation.
No, I think this is more. And if you want to, um.
I move, we nod our heads in approval.
I am actually going to put that in the staff report.
And I agree. I mean, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this and. Responsive to the issues that we have raised as we've moved forward. So thank you for that.
And it was simple, right?
Yeah.
All right, because that was like, that was my personal goal today was.
Much more.
Yeah, and it's it's attached to your packet. That's the actual policy.
Yeah.
In itself is it's a few pages, right? So it really is. Um, from a policy perspective, that's it'll be more more detail on the administrative side in terms of how we. You know, implement the program, but the intent is not to get this to be overly complicated because we want people to use it.
Right.
And you're hearing that from the development community is what I hear you saying. So that's a good sign also that you're not telling us. Yeah, I think one positive thing is, you know, some of the projects that we've talked about that are paused right now, I think. With this program, someone might be able to unpause.
That you were hearing or you, Russ talked about at the last meeting. I just watched Russ's hesitation this morning. No, it was good. Wasn't too long, simple.
Yeah, and I think just going back to that graph that Jonathan mentioned with the um absorption rates, like. We saw that happened in the great recession where we just, everything just shut down. There were years that were zero multifamily construction. So. We're kind of paying, we're still paying the price for that. So what we don't want to do is just be short sighted. And it's like, what is happening right now in the market? Everything shuts down and then we're in a bigger hole to climb out of. So we're trying to prevent that with policies like this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. Good work.
If you'll sleep tonight as opposed to last.
When you come into that second meeting like a week later, you're like, that was Rob. I was like, yes, it was.
Thank you.
That is it for our agenda today. I know the next meeting is in September, the fourth Monday of September.
And just to give you a little bit of preview of some things I'm working on to go a little more in depth on the deflection program that is going to be stood up in September. Um, so I put some information in the council memo last week. Uh, this is the coordination between uh Deschutes County Public Health. And law enforcement. So this is kind of as a result of the new after measure one ten, right, of how we're working to get more folks into treatment and partnering. Between those two disciplines. Um, and then kind of I I think it's good for maybe another update as to what's happening with some of those uh governance structural changes with the C H R O two. So I'll coordinate with you, Megan, on some of those.
Great.
But if there's other items of interest, um, I know there's something else and I'm just forgetting off the top of my head, but. We have time to kind of build that agenda. If there's i- items that you want to see us talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Twelve twenty seven.